We have Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, tell Brandon move up here to God's country. You don't tell Brandon then to move to God's country. They're in, uh, I know they're out of Raleigh.
They're in Holly Springs.
Pretty good.
As a contractor. Plus he's figured out a short.
Get my hoes out there and tell them.
Right.
Turn around, let me go across their back a couple times.
We got a successor, so don't worry.
There's no way to properly convey the attitude with all of it.
You didn't get any lectures. I never remember getting a lecture whatsoever.
We never got one of them.
You just knew.
Oh, I'd much rather take.
Has you been told?
You talking about ki- you talking about parents?
Yeah.
I'd have much rather taken a beating. I didn't want to be talked to. I'd have much rather taken a whipping.
I forgot to talk with it.
I'd have much rather taken a whipping.
You just knew, and you know, people would know now, but they just, you know.
And, and, and if you got caught somewhere else doing something, you gonna get, you gonna get it when you get home too.
We got a minute. We won't wait on Jim.
We are.
Well, we don't, we don't need to wait on him.
May I pose on you again for the invocation? If not, I'd be delighted to do it. You got it?
Doesn't, I, I know what that's, okay.
Robbie, is he making a hand wave with Spectrum?
Mr. Rigsby. We, let's see, reached out to.
Be back in the room in a second.
Maria Rice, that's the, uh. That's the account manager or account executive and spoke with her and I told her, one, I need to get her to confirm when it actually expires. From what Ms. Martin and I can tell, it expires on the twenty-eighth of October of this year. Because that's when the former mayor signed the contract and it says a thirty-six month contract. However, Prius had some notes in there that someone told her over the telephone, it didn't expire until February of next year. Of twenty twenty-three. And so I'm still waiting on her to confirm which of those it is Maria that is. And, uh, told her to basically prepare a package. She wanted to call me over the telephone and talk about it. I thought, well, that's hard to. Get all that information from over the phone and then bring it here without having something in front of me. So I've, I've emailed her and asked her to get a package together of a quote of what it would cost to continue the same services that we've got. And then see what other services they offer because she said that they, you know, in the last three years, they've got a lot of new things.
Do we need new ser- do we need any more services?
Not that I'm aware of.
You, you let her know that we're gonna be talk- we're talking to somebody else. We feel like we really got ripped a new one.
Yeah, I understand.
And you tell her there's one councilman that really says we got ripped a new one.
I understand.
And it, you know.
Do love them.
And there's gonna be, and it, you know.
Which you gotta talk.
Robbie, we're trying to hold on, just staying in the building and not selling the building.
Oh, Lord.
I understand, yeah.
I mean, we got rid of a new one.
Yeah.
And, and I want a gift card win.
I understand. And I asked her about that.
I mean specifically ask you.
I, I, well, now, I will say this, hold on, in my email, I specifically asked her. Hold on, I just sent it. If I say just sent it, it was yesterday. I said.
Guys, we, we've got Gary and, and T here. Let's.
Oh, yeah, it's now the start.
That's fine.
I've got five fifteen. It is September the thirtieth, uh, two, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting is called Order. Mr. Jones, if you would do our invocation once again for us, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you all would bow, bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for the gift of Stokesdale and we thank you for the opportunity to. Uh, lead our citizens and, and hope that you will lead and guide to direct us, give us wisdom. And remind us of the responsibilities we have and help us carry those out. We ask that you be with each citizen and be with us this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Review and adopt the twenty twenty-two Water System Workshop Meeting Calendar. Uh, if you'll flip over, it's on the second page. Oh, sorry. Is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the, uh, Water System Meeting Work Session Calendar.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Too much.
Yeah, yes, um, just hypothetically, um, I'm all right with it right now, but it has. Um, if I become gainfully employed in the future, would y'all consider moving that just down a little bit to maybe six o'clock?
Yes, sir, I would.
Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, I will not be at the meeting. I, I will try to, I will join by telephone if possible. At is, if I got service. But, um. All the rest of the days, I'll probably be fine with it. But it wouldn't matter if you had it at six or seven.
Yeah.
Three, you know, but I, I can, I can be here by, by phone and listen. I'll probably do more listening. Probably be the best thing anyway.
I think realistically speaking, all of us will likely have something come up on, on these meetings and hopefully we can call in like you're gonna try to do.
Yeah.
Uh, if not, you know. These meetings, I mean, nobody's dragging us here and making us have these. So if, if, if it's better for us to kick back and punt on one, we can make that decision.
Well.
And we're not spending money right now.
And certainly if Jim is complex with any work schedule he has or any other council members' future work schedules, we can also revise that.
Well, well, for you people that call these meetings, you know, council has a statutory obligation to attend them and vote. And I think, I think this is a little much. I'm here, uh. I would rather they be at seven in the evening and five in the afternoon as it, as it impacts my work schedule, but I, I certainly wanna be accommodating to. Everybody, the staff, the citizens and other council members, so, so here I am at least at this meeting.
I, I hear you and I call these at five fifteen really for, uh, staff. The, uh. You know, I, I live fifty feet away, so it's, it's no big deal if it's five fifteen or seven to me, but, uh.
Just taking a meeting at a time and we'll, we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, if Robbie can go ahead and put these on the calendar, if we adopt this tonight and then, uh.
We can always change it.
We need to change, we can change.
Absolutely, that's fine.
Just so you know, Robbie, Derek, uh, made a motion to adopt the schedule. I seconded it.
Perfect.
Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Jones says no, I say aye.
Okay.
Now we begin our water, water system workshop. We were asked last week by, uh, Mr. Floyd to put together some ideas that each of us had for what we wanted to do going forward. Uh, I'll open the floor up for some discussion.
What've we got? We got Gary here.
Yeah, I, I was gonna welcome.
I don't want him to have to sit out here and listen to us jaw jack.
I'm sorry.
Unless he wants to.
Gary, I apologize. I don't know who you are.
I'm Gary McChunis. Yeah. I'm your ORC or yours.
Very good, very good. Nice to put a face, nice to put a face with a name.
Mister, Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have two people in the audience, one of them being Gary. Uh, we need to get his, to a microphone or have him come get the microphone so that we get him on the recorder.
Why can't you sit over there?
So.
Make sure it's on, Robbie.
He is sitting.
You can sit down and hold it, right?
Sit over there where the attorney usually sits.
And Gary, the only reason, yeah, that's even a better idea.
You can give us some legal advice too while you over there. You can give us some legal advice.
That's right.
The attorney in the media.
We apologize for not having you.
This'll be cheaper, cheaper. And it, it is with the attorney sitting.
We'll get, we'll get you a nameplate eventually.
We will.
Okay, that's okay. I don't, I don't need all.
You can have mine.
But Gary, I appreciate you coming and I know you do a lot of hard work for the town and, uh, I appreciate everything.
If, if, Gary, if you would, would you restart and, and give us your name, position with the town and so forth, so that, that'll wind up on our electronic record?
Okay, my name is Gary McChunis and I'm the town's ORC for the water system. I take care of your testing, your chlorine station. And I'm just here to answer any questions y'all might have and throw out a few ideas that, that I have that think, I think would be good for the town.
Okay. So, so Gary, one thing I learned about you when we, we were speaking was your experience down east and then, uh. Out here, so could you just go over, you know, what, what all you've done with different water systems, uh, your experience and all that?
I started in two thousand and six and I started as a, um, distribution helper. It was called a water mechanic for Currituck County. We were two million gallon a day well facility. We do RO, green sand on island exchange filter system. We had six deep wells that ran the RO, twenty-three chowder rails that ran our green sands island exchange. We did two million gallons a day. Being a resort, summertime, we'd put out one point eight, one point nine million gallons. Wintertime, couldn't give it away, just the way it is. People come in the summer, people not there in the winter. Small water system, seventy-five hundred service connects. We had seventy-five hundred customers. I spent eleven years there. I have an A well, an A distribution, a B surface, FISchem one and grade one wastewater. Out here, out west, I've worked for the city of Salisbury, which is a thirty-four million gallon a day surface plant. I've worked for the city of Breedsville, which is a nine million gallon a day surface plant. And currently I'm employed with West Tech Engineering. We're a worldwide firm that specializes in drinking water, wastewater. We manufacture equipment, we install equipment as well as operate site operations. And that's what I do. I'm a lead operator for West.
So when you say surface plant, that, he- help me out on that.
Surface plant is reservoir, uh, city of Salisbury pulls out of Yakon River.
So similar to what for South County, would you consider them a surface?
Well, did, for South County, I don't, um, Winston Salem?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a surface plant.
Okay.
Yes, they are. Uh, Reedsville's a surface plant, Lake Reed is their body of water they pull out of. And of course, this is a, we're a purchase system. We get out water from Winston Salem.
Right.
So basically, it's already treated. We don't do anything to treatment other than add chlorine. That's what the booster station's for. And everybody has a different train of thought on that. I kinda manage the chlorine a little differently than my predecessor. Um, I use the booster station kinda what it was really intended for. It's just exactly what it says. It's a booster station. To boost chlorine residuals during the high demand summer months when the chlorine residuals gets a little low. I run that booster station from mid-May till about the middle of October. That's all we need to do. I shut it down. I winterize it, I clean the tanks, shut it off. Winston Salem provides adequate chlorination from one end of the system to the other during the winter months, so I only run it during the summer months. And that really helps control the TTHMs, cause they're all based off of chlorine.
Right.
So that makes a big difference and the numbers are, are pretty low compared to what they've been in the past. So the system works pretty good, haven't had any problems. Well, I say that, little problems. I walked in today, had a little leak, no big deal. Cut the line, repaired that, filled the tank, everything's good. Residuals are good. I did have a water complaint that Priscilla sent me. Thursday, I believe, um, a customer over on Vong Street was saying she was having chlorine smell in the morning. So I went over there Sunday afternoon and ran a chlorine for her out of her, um, back spigot. So she could see point seven five, exactly where it should be. Also showed her the back tea results that I had just recently collected for the month. One of them was at Subway, point eight one was the residual. And then down here at Countryside, the retirement home, I collected the back tea there, point six two. So you can see from one end of the system to the other, we have adequate chlorine. Coming in the booster station this time of year, I also run. What Winston Salem is feeding us, so I kinda gives me an idea of where I wanna set the chemical pump. To make sure I have good chlorine at the end of the system. Coming in right now, we're in the low forties, point four one, point four three, somewhere in that range. Is what Winston Salem send. So I add a little chlorine from there down. I try to keep it under a part. Uh, state says we can go up to four parts, but that would be like a swimming pool.
Swimming pool.
Yeah, there, there's no need in that. Uh, I like to keep it right around the part. If I can, three quarters of a part, it's perfect. Works great for me.
Good. So we had discussed, and I've discussed this with Tim and, you know, Tim, Tim's got more experience than anybody of, of us up here. Uh, but we've discussed, uh, with lack of a better word, an agitator or water stirrer. Uh, and then I guess there's two different kinds that, help me, a pneumatic system.
The, the stirrer versus diffuser, can you speak to the differences between the two?
Well, an agitator is gonna be like a mixer, like a beater. A diffuser, I'm not quite sure how that would be working this elevated tower unless it's kinda like a venture.
It, from what I understand, uh, nozzles are installed in the top of the tank and, and water and air are circulated.
Okay.
It's the type of system, uh, the plant operator at Madison has, I've had some conversation with him. And that's what Madison has installed, if, if I'm understanding here him correctly, we have had.
Spray nozzle coming down from the top, feeding air as well.
Yeah, I, I think of that, I think Patty Stokes put it in her paper. But I, I, you know, have people laugh at this, but I think of that stirrer as kinda like a giant milkshake mixer sticking into the tank. I mean, I've, I've seen diagrams that people have brought into the building here before. So, so one way or the other, I, I guess we need, uh, we need something. And, and I, I think from what I understand, the diffuser systems are a little bit newer than the stirrer systems, but I don't know that to be fact.
Well, nowadays, I'll give you a quick tower one-on-one in case you don't understand how they actually.
That'd be great.
Okay, this tower here, it has an inlet and an outlet, and they're both on the bottom of the tank. So if you'll visualize that bowl, that tower's not full to the top. Full level's about three quarters of the way up. What it'll do is the water comes in from the bottom and it goes out from the bottom. So if you just put a line across the middle of that tower and visualize it, the water's going down, the water's coming up. That top layer doesn't come out of that tower. So it pretty much gets stagnant. If you've seen a pond, how it gets a little pond scum on it, the towers do the same thing. It just doesn't circulate itself. You don't turn over that tower. The water coming in from Winston Salem, it's gonna feed system demand before it ever goes to that tower. Meaning whatever demand is in the system, it's automatically gonna flow through the pipes. The leftover is gonna go into the tower. Normally that's doing off usage hours. That's how it'll fill. Then it'll come out during the day as needed to help with system pressure. That's why it's elevated. So that top layer does get stagnant. So agitating the tower is a great idea, I think. The new tower, the one they just built down here in Rockingham County, that's got a cascading system in it. So when the pipe fills, when that tower fills, it cascades out, which automatically agitates that tower every time it's taking on more. Which keeps it from becoming stagnant. It's not really an issue unless you have a water main break. Or a fire where you have heavy usage and you know, in the wintertime, we'll have the temperature drops and the lake will stratify, turns itself over. That tower does the same thing. It'll turn itself over in the cooler temperatures and that pond scum will eventually rise back to the top. So it's normally not an issue unless it was a water main break or a major fire where it was a lot of usage. Then it could come out into the system and it would contaminate the system.
Is it possible to install what Rockingham County has in their towers currently? Is it possible to install in towers?
You can add an existing cascading system. That's something you could look into. Hazen and Sawyer is the engineering firm for the town. Is that still correct?
We, we've used several others, but right, we do use them as kind of a main consultant.
Well, they, they could be a wealth of knowledge as far as, um, companies, when I reached out to you.
You had Southern Corrosion.
One I could think of at the top of my head was Southern Corrosion.
Right.
We've used them at Currituck County. They did the inside and outside of our three elevated towers, painting them like the town just recently had done. Whoever painted the tower could probably give you some information on what would be the best way to agitate it. I think SUEZ does it as well. They're a worldwide company and I believe they have an office out in Rockingham. I believe they'll do the work. And like I said, whoever painted the tower is probably capable of doing the work. So there's several other outlets you could look into as far as seeing what the cost would be and what they would recommend. An older tower like this, what would be the best system to go with. But agitating the water. Is just gonna help in the long run, all the way down the road.
Well, Gary, now that you're here, certainly this would be the time. If you have any requests or complaints or, or anything. You wanna a- address the full council here, you got our attention if there's anything you can think of.
Well, I don't have any complaints. I hope y'all don't. If I had some, nobody would listen to me anyway, but that's the top. Oh, we would. I would. I, I really don't have any complaints. Um, I hope y'all think I'm doing a good job. I've been doing this for town for numerous years now. I enjoy doing it. I'm local, I'm right down the street. I live right off of Lemons. So the booster station's like six miles from my house, so it's quick and convenient. I know Gene from Yates. We make a pretty good team.
Yep.
So that works pretty good. Um, as far as some ideas for the water system. Since you do have some grant money, you know, agitating the tower, I think is a great idea. I know that's something you've looked into before with previous councils. And it's, it's never gotten anywhere. I think that's something really that y'all should consider and propose. It's not my decision. I'm just here to help y'all with information. Um, I think sampling stations is another good idea. You have seen the one at the booster station that Winston Salem installed. It's, it's, uh, we have six back tea sites, two of which I don't use. One of them is on Green Pond, is a residential home. You know, I, I'm not gonna enter the house to collect a back tea. And it's an outside spigot, which I don't have a problem with outside spigots. Ninety-nine percent of water systems collect from outside spigots. The one up here at, uh, the winery, I don't use that one anymore since COVID, cause it's just an enclosed environment. So I really don't use it. It's a back tea site, but I just don't use that one anymore. So I use four out of the six. Which is Countryside, Little Feet, Subway and Stoke Bridge.
And what are you using them for?
Back tees, bacteriological samples. State requires that, uh, they're based on service connects. We have to collect two a month. I, I, I like to alternate. State likes you to alternate as well. They don't want you going to the same sites. Um, I like those sites because they have inside kitchen sinks that I can use. All but Little Feet, I don't enter that, cause it's a daycare. I do use their outside spigot, which like I said, I don't have a problem with outside spigots. Ninety-nine percent of them are taken from outside spigots. But sampling stations, I think are a good idea. I think they're pretty inexpensive. I would think the one that Winston Salem installed at the booster station. That's stainless steel, so it won't freeze. The station itself is probably twelve to thirteen hundred dollars. Gene could do the actual installation of it at Yates.
Where, where would you put that, Gary?
In each one of the MRT sites.
The current sites?
Yes, sir. It'd be like, uh, when I do the TTHMs, I use the hydrant in front of the Methodist Church. Up here by where the gun shop is, Atlantic Outdoors. And I use the hydrant, that's the designated sample sites that the state is designated. I use the fire hydrant, uh, right there in front of Colt. I use that for the TTHMs. Now, I won't collect a back tea out of that, cause we'd probably get a hit, but that's not my sampling site anyway. It's just something I was thinking of that's a controlled atmosphere. It's locked. The only one that had access to it would be us. It's not like the kitchen sinks that I use. Um, I've never had a trouble with them. I, what I do and anybody else that collects a back tea, you're gonna use, I use a spray bottle with chlorine. So I can disinfect the spigot itself, outside and inside. I'll spray it, let it soak for about thirty seconds. Then I get the water running. I let the water flush. When I fill out the paperwork, then I turn the water down to a pencil stream. To actually collect the back tea. It's a hundred mil sample. Record the time, record the residual, take them to the, uh, paste. That's who we use for our lab. And if I take it in, I usually take it in on Monday and I get the results back on a Tuesday. I'm pretty sure they email them to you too as well, Robbie?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I'm pretty sure Priscilla prints everything and puts them in the water book.
Yep.
So there's a copy of all of that. And then, of course, I get a copy of it from my, my records. So I know where I've gone each month, so I can make sure that I do alternate.
Help me understand, what would this tea, what would this back tea do that, that we're not currently getting?
What the state requires is because of our service connects. What he does is he tells us if we have bacteria in our water.
He's checking our system. But let me, let me ask this. We, we don't currently have this?
No.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do. I think you're meaning to ask, what do the sample stations give us that we currently aren't getting?
See, I, yeah, okay, sampling station is, if you've never seen one, I should've printed one off if.
It's not, it's not important.
Well, it's just a, it's just an enclosed, Tim has seen it down at the booster station. It's just a green box that opens. That has a stainless steel spigot and then it has a little smaller spigot in under it for TTHMs, cause they have to be free of air.
There it is.
Yep.
There you go. That, that, that is very similar to what's at, uh, Winston Salem, except it's stainless steel. Which is this one.
So would those be, Gary, would those be installed at the right of way or?
Yes, uh, they'd come off of, um, it'd be like a water tap, like when Gene puts in a water meter, he would install it the same way. He'd just reduce it down. That's probably a three quarter inch coming in that's feeding it. And it's just an enclosed, as you can see, it's just an enclosed sample station that could be locked. There's no contamination in it. There's nobody else using it, but whoever's collecting the samples. It's something that you don't have to do. It's, it's, I'm just throwing that out there as an idea.
That's a good idea.
Can I ask a question? So you're currently sampling at the nursing home and, um, the other places you said. So you had to go on their property, go on theirs. Will this replace that?
Yes.
Okay, so this'll keep you from going on somebody's property and.
But yes, it does that and, um, you know, I'm kinda locked into their hours.
Yeah.
As far as when I collect, of course, they have to be opened for me to go inside. I could do them out of the outside spigot, but since they do have an inside facility available, it's a little safer for me to make sure. I don't get a hit, cause it's a, it's a absent-absent-present-present test. We want them to come back absent. Absent for no bacteria, absent for no E. coli. That's what they're testing for. If I should get a hit, which I have at the, um, nursing home on the outside spigot, two years ago. Three times in a row. We designated, uh, that was when Mike Painter was the state inspector. And he came out, because I got a hit three times in a row from the same sampling. Once you get a hit. I have to do upstream, downstream and back at the original. And they have to be recollected within forty-eight hours. And you have to keep doing them till you get it clean. And then, since it did get a hit three times for bacteria, the state came. Mike Painter and I had to go down and we determined that being the outside spigot, it was during the summer months, during the heat, the front of the building. A spider or something could get up in there. It doesn't take much to throw one off. It came back present-absent. So it had no E. coli, just means it had a little bacteria in the water. The water was safe to drink. It's nothing that we had to notify the public about. I just have to re-sample it till I get a clean one, which we did. And I just don't use the outside spigot anymore. I moved inside to the kitchen. Never had a problem since. That's something that a sampling station helps eliminate. It keeps contaminants out. And nobody else has access but us.
So you're talking about twelve hundred dollars per unit roughly?
I think they're roughly twelve fifty, thirteen hundred dollars, yes, sir, per unit plus installation.
Okay. And we could use how many?
Well, we have six MRT sites. We have five MRT sites, six back tea sites. So you could, it would be nice to have six. But, you know, I'm only currently running four back tees. The state's good with that, four different sample locations. They don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it. It's just, then again, it's just something I thought of that might benefit the city. Might help me a little bit or whoever the future operator is on down the road. Just something I'm throwing out there.
Okay, that's good.
Sounds good. Anything else come to mind, young man?
And the line extension that y'all have been previously talking about, that, that, that's always a good idea to have another water source. That's probably the most expensive out of everything.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I think y'all have already been in discussions with that and.
Let me ask. Let me ask, I- I don't mean to interrupt. Let me ask you this. How practical is it if we draw the same water source as our secondary source? In other words, if we draw from Winston Salem, are we gaining anything?
Well, I thought you were coming in all the way and bringing it from Kernersville.
We- we haven't decided on anything. We've talked about a variety of things. But what do we do? If we come in from Kernersville, it's the same water, is it not?
It's a different tank, isn't it, on the other side?
Different- different township, isn't it?
It is, but it's the same source, is it not?
It's- it's.
It's ultimately the same source, but it- but it splits off. I've looked at the map for Forsyth. It kinda splits off, so some, you know, like you have different, whatever you wanna call it, uh, tanks, uh, distribution centers, whatever you wanna call it. So, it's not, eh, there is a split off and, you know, and Winston's have got a big system. So, they, you know, they've got lines going in several different directions and different, uh, infrastructures to manage each line. So, if we come down Hall River, that's gonna provide us a complete, other than the- the pipe going into the Yadkin River giving out, that's gonna provide us, my understanding, a completely second source from the one fifty-eight source.
It- it might be a different zone, Gary, but the Winston Salem South County system runs Kernersville.
Oh, they do, so it's the same. So, you're just bringing it in from another direction.
They- they took it over. They took it over years ago.
It's not a true secondary source. And, you know, in all the years that you've been a purchase assistant from Winston Salem, there's never been a problem.
Right.
I mean, there really hasn't. It- it could be, but, I mean, that's kinda like, you know, you cut that tree down, 'cause you think it's gonna fall on your house, and it's the one beside it that you didn't cut down. You just don't know. You just can't foresee that. So, and that- that's one of your most expensive ventures, I would imagine, is- is bringing in another line. That's- that's- that's not gonna be a cheap venture.
So, let's say we've got this, we're currently getting it through Walker Town. So, the Walker Town line gets cut off. Now, we've got this Hall River line. That Hall River line could- could feed us, even though the Walker Town line is out.
Well, I think that was the whole intention of to start with, is to have another water source.
Even if it's the same, even if it's the same source.
You're bringing it in from somewhere else.
Something's gonna have to happen to the Yadkin River connection.
Well, you know, you'd be surprised how many people pull out of that Yadkin River.
Well, I just hope they're pulling out north instead of south of Winston.
And you'd be surprised about how many wastewater plants discharge into that Yadkin River.
That's what I, that's what I mean.
You had a problem like you're having down Mississippi right now, and it was on that system, you would still be having a problem, even if you come up, uh, even if you had that source.
Well, you know, wastewater, the strain, the restrictions on the wastewater discharge, they're a lot harder on discharging in a body of water like that, because there is people downstream that are pulling it for drinking water source. So, I don't know if you've ever toured a big wastewater plant before, but the superintendent usually will drink some of the effluent to show you that that water, and I believe one day you will see, because of the shortage of water worldwide, that the wastewater, instead of being discharged into a river, will be piped back to the water plant for future disinfectant to be used as a water source.
Yum, yum.
Gary, I'm gonna keep my will.
I may start digging on one myself here.
Generally, you don't, uh, get involved in ma- measuring our pressures or checking any of our water flows at hydrants. Is- is that correct?
That- that is correct. I believe the fire department does that. The only time I have ever done a pressure, I do have a pressure gauge. If someone complains of low pressure, I will go put a pressure gauge on their outside spigot, and I have never been below thirty psi.
And- and right now, we're not flushing any water to- to speak of, correct?
No, sir.
Okay.
Can any water speak of.
And- and you're pretty much satisfied with the, uh, the, uh, free chlorine at the ends of our system? We're, we got enough new housing that is moving enough water that- that we're doing okay?
Yes, sir. At the present, we are. I've had no problems with residuals. You know, like I said, as the heat dissipates, next couple of months, that chlorine station will be winterized. I'll clean it up, turn it off, let it sit. There- there's no need to feed it if we don't need it. It- it really helps me out down the road for other testing. And it- it saves a dollar here and there. I'm- I'm one like, uh, if you don't need it, don't do it.
We're all about saving a dollar.
And if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay. We're- we're also, based on the Hazen and Solly report, probably looking at installing the recommended, electronic controls so that, uh, our PRV valve will communicate with our altitude valve and the elevated tank to- to cycle that tank some and maybe get a, some sort of control panel in town hall, et cetera, et cetera. Do you have any experience with those, uh, those type of systems? That, uh, so, okay, I just, uh, we- we would want to tap that experience if you had any, so.
That would be something for, uh, Underwood and Gene.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, Underwood is probably one of your best. I've met Russell Underwood before. He was one of my instructors when I was doing AWIL. And he is like third generation. If you've got a pump from nineteen twenty-eight, that man's gonna have a part on his shelf. He's- he's a wealth of knowledge.
Those are the folks at Ashboro?
Sanford.
Sanford, okay.
Any other questions? No, I think I'm good. Gary, thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Is that, is that anything, is there anything else that you had to add?
No, no, sir. I- I've just came to put my little two cents worth in and- and one, meet you, 'cause you're all together. I've- I've never met anybody but Mr. Jones, so that's nice. I have a.
Don't hesitate to call. If you need us, don't hesitate to call.
He's got my cellphone now, and so does he, so.
Evidently, you've been doing a good job, of course.
Well, I appreciate that. And I haven't heard any complaints from him. And I've been talking to you right frequently. Matter of fact, you called me when I was walking in the building. I know who they are when they come up, and- and that's good. You know, I'm available twenty-four seven. This is what I do. This is my career. I love what I do, and I'm here to help the town any way I can. So, I- I- I'm gonna excuse myself here in a little while for two reasons. It's dinnertime, and I got a boy that happens to be twelve years old today.
Oh, you gotta go, Lord. We appreciate you being here and, you know, absolutely.
Let me just ask you one question to follow up. You know, we talked about the- the source coming down Bethel Church or Hall River. I know there was some discussion, and my apologies, I missed the last meeting, so I don't know what was discussed. What are your thoughts on bringing in a source from another, another original source? Like coming out of one of the, uh, either, um, Reedsville or, uh, Madison, one of those sources? And- and combining with our source?
Do- do they, do they have adequate water supply, would be my only question? Because working at the city of Reedsville, I know for a fact that we sell Greensboro water. Quite a bit of water.
Million gallons a day is what I hear.
On a daily basis. So, you know, Reedsville is a nine million gallon a day facility, and it's an older plant. Now, it is pulling off of Lake Reed, so they've got a great source coming in. But I don't know that they have enough water. I don't know. That's something you would have to, you know.
But- but Reedsville treats with chloramine.
See, and that could be a problem. They do. They're a chloramine system. And that's not gonna mix very well with free chlorine. See, they- they use chloramine, which is ammonia and liquid gas for their disinfectant. Now, there's some chlorine that's put on the back end of it, but their major treatment is chloramine.
Gary, is the reason they changed so they could sell to Greensboro?
I think that's the way it was originally designed.
Okay.
Personally, chlorine gas is very, very dangerous. And they have one-ton cylinders, and there's twenty of them that are stored there. And I don't know if you've ever been to the city of Reedsville Water Plant, but it's on a little dead-end street. It's probably got a dozen houses on it. If there was ever a major leak and explosion, it'd wipe out that neighborhood. And I'll tell you, you know, when you have that much storage, you have to attend hazmat classes once a year for that. And we have an alarm in the chlorine room, 'cause chlorine gas is two and a half times heavier than air, so it's gonna go to the bottom. And it's gonna, it would alarm occasionally. And first thing I'd do is look out the back door, make sure there's not a plume. And then I'd get in the truck and go to the evacuation point where I'm supposed to be on outside that gate. And then I'd call the water superintendent. And he'd go, "Well, did you go in there and look?" I'm like, "Hell, no. I went where I'm supposed to go."
So, you mentioned chlorine gas. Do we use that?
No, we use bleach, liquid.
Okay.
The only ones that I know that feed gas is, the only plant that I've ever worked at that feeds gas is, is the city of Reedsville. And it's, um, it's- it's very dangerous. It's, it takes two people to change out a tank that have to have a respirator, scuba, 'cause it has to be self-contained breathing apparatus. 'Cause if you breathe in just a little bit of that with the water in your body, it's gonna turn it to a bleached sulfuric acid. It's gonna burn you from the inside out. It's very, very dangerous.
How do I get one of those jobs?
Yeah, I- I don't like it. I- I've never been a fan of chlorine gas because of the danger. But an older plant like that, a lot of them feed that.
But on- once it leaves a distribution plant, there's no danger to the citizens. And my understanding is that it doesn't have an, it, there's no issue with TTHMs or the chloramine created system, is there?
A- a- any water system that I've ever worked at, including Reedsville, has a TTHM problem.
So, so it's- it's basically the same problem with the chlorine lures chloramine as far as the TTHM residuals do.
It is.
That doesn't buy you anything?
Not really. And- and a lot of, um, there's more than one way to skin a cat. There's a lot of different approaches to a TTHM doing collection. City of Reedsville, for example, what we did is we would take the elevated towers, and it makes a lot more work on the operator itself, but we would take our tower levels down from where we normally kept them. And by doing that, we would do that about two weeks prior to collection. And by doing that, we're doing a system-wide flush with actually not having to flush the fire hydrant. We're not really throwing the water on the ground. We're just bringing the level down, so we're turning over everything out of the towers, and we're turning over everything out of the distribution system. So, when we do our co- collection, we're doing good, fresh water. Because that's a lot of your TTHM problem, is stagnant water. It just doesn't move. And it becomes old. And it's- it's just a natural, from the minerals in the water and the way they form with chlorine, that's what they create. It, I've never worked a water system that didn't have TTHMs. But there's a way to control. And a lot of that is your chlorine residuals and keeping adequate fresh water throughout the system, which agitating your tower helps do that. So, there- there's always more than one way to skin a cat. But it's, it's one of those things that was put in place probably forty-five years ago. Is it really a health effect? If you drank a hundred gallons of water a day for thirty-five years, you'd have a slight chance. That- that's why it's not a major issue, but when somebody mentions it, it becomes one. The state requires a certain level that we have to maintain. And what they do, there's four samples a year from the same two locations, and they take the yearly average, and that's what they base it on. And it has to be below their MCL, which we are. We're well below. We're point zero four five. The MCL on it's point zero eight oh. And we stay well below that. Our elevated month is this month, and I haven't gotten the results back yet from the lab. But August is always, always our elevated month. It'll be a little higher than the rest of the month, but for the other three quarters averaged out, we're below the MCL. And that's all the state's gonna look at. So, there's- there's no need for alarm. There's no need for any public notification. But it will be elevated. And I should be getting those results back here shortly, 'cause they were collected the beginning of the month, and it's like a fifteen-day test. So, we should be getting those back from PACE here sometime soon.
I don't wanna cut you short, but you got a birthday party to go to, brother.
Yes, sir, I do. I got a boy waiting on me.
If we don't have any other questions from council?
Nah, we're good. Thank you, Gary.
Well, just two minutes. We talked about connecting to Rockingham County via Reedsville. There's also an option with Madison, which treats with free chlorine as opposed to chloramine.
Right. Well, Madison, I mean, if- if they have the water, that's a little small facility too, isn't it? I'm not familiar with their operation. I mean, I could look into that. It's all public record.
But i- if you look at the Madison Water Plant and the Mayodan Water Plant, they're- they're nowhere near capacity. And they have, uh, quite a bit of capacity. It's just a matter of how much, uh, Rockingham County is setting aside for future use as far as that capacity goes.
Right. And plus the cost. What is it gonna cost you?
Yeah, there's cost and- and, uh, yeah, Rockingham County understandably wants to do what's best for Rockingham County. And I- I think there's always a possibility, if they won't sell us water today, they'll sell us water tomorrow. But, you know, we gotta get to that point.
Right. Well, I think you've got some options. Um, you know, then again, that's kind, I guess where your engineer firm would come in to give you the- the- the best source at the best, you know, cost too, as- as well.
Our problem is getting Reedsville, is getting Rockingham County to cooperate.
Well.
I live in Rockingham County. I'm right on that line. You know, so I don't have any deals with it. I have well and septic too, so.
You know, if we go down Hall River Road, you're talking about, uh, spending more money on that line to service. Well, we- we'll have another water line, of course, but you'll service right at a quarter of a mile in, uh, Stokesdale. And we're gonna spend more money on that one line than we spend on the whole system. So, I mean, it's a lot we gotta look at. We gotta, we gotta look at all of it.
It is a lot you gotta look at. And you gotta look at, you know, how long has Winston Salem be, had been feeding you? And how many issues, I mean, they've never cut the water off. There's never been a issue. I think you had that one big storm to where it was a possibility, which started the whole line extension. So, that's something that's really gonna have to take some thought and consideration, 'cause it's gonna be very expensive.
And if a line, let's say that lightning just knocked, hit a line and shattered it, how long do you think it would take Winston to be out and fix a line? I mean, they're on single lines other places too. A lot of water systems have got a single line going out.
Yeah, but they're, uh, Winston Salem's twenty-four seven. They're- they're a big operation. They're gonna fix that quick. And, you know, it's funny, you said lightning, and I'll tell you a quick story and then I'll go. Never seen this before, but Currituck County, we had lightning. It hit a pine tree. And it split our distribution and our raw water line, because they were in the ground together about four foot apart, fourteen-inch mains. And when it hit that tree, it came over and split both those lines. And that was a two o'clock in, you know, in the morning repair. But we were fortunate that we were able to devolve off just that one neighborhood, so we didn't lose whole system pressure, which opens a whole nother can of worms you don't wanna do. But that was all from a lightning strike, and it split two lines within four feet of each other that are six foot in the ground.
Right.
So, that does happen. I've seen it firsthand.
That's why I said it. We just had a big lightning strike, and that could've popped one, you know, just in.
I have seen that. That's, that's rather unusual, but I have experienced that one time, so.
We got a, we got a lot to weigh out. That's what we're, that's why we're having these meetings.
Well, there you go. That- that's a start, and that's a good way to do it, I think. So, anytime I can be of any service, you know, I need a little notice to arrange my schedule. So, I mean, I think the first time, and there's no way, you know. But I- I can usually work in if I have some notice, you know, whatever y'all need me to do. So, other than that, it was a pleasure meeting all of y'all.
Thank you very much, Gary.
It was a pleasure.
Hope I was a little help to you and gave you a little insight. And if not, in disregard everything I said.
I'm doing everything I can to get you that birthday party. See you, brother.
There you go.
Hey, thanks a lot, Gary. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.
See. All right, take it easy.
That's a lot to think about.
That's right.
I'll see y'all later.
See you, buddy.
Did you have anything to add to this?
So, um, have we put together a, maybe a list of priorities or a list of, of wants? Something intangible in writing that we can kinda work off of or work through?
Derek had asked for that last, in our last meeting. I- I didn't have anything in it specific. Does anyone else have anything specific that they?
Most what we were talking about, that, you know, we were, my thoughts as a single councilman is that we need to shore up what we have now. We've got, we've got the dollars to do it. We need to shore it up. The one thing that the agitator or the stirrer, whatever we end up doing, sounds like that's something that needs to be done.
I agree.
The sampling stations is something that could be done. He said he doesn't have to have it. I mean, that's something we- we can put in there, um, you know, if it would help out. But, uh, you know, that's what we're trying to figure out, is- is things to shore up our system. And of course, you know, we're looking at a- a secondary source or, or whatever. I think we need to, um, just start ironing out these sources. You know, you- you seem to like Hall River. I mean, you know, that's been going on for a long time. And then there's other options. You know, you, you seem to like Hall River. I mean, you know, that's been going on for a long time, and then there's other options. Uh, we need to kinda, I guess, maybe throw it on a sheet of paper, Ben Frank will close on all of them. What's the benefits and what's the, uh, you know, the disadvantages and of each one of them, and iron them out. And, uh, so, and then see if there's, if money or, uh, you know, where we can, where we can go with.
Yeah, I, I agree, Jimmy. I think we need to have a, for lack of better words, we just need to have a big piece of paper with, with these, the options for the other line. Options maybe for like maintenance, tank, agitators, that kinda stuff. And then another, maybe another column for, um, uh, the Hazen and Sawyer recommendations. You know, uh, and, and, and kinda, I, I think we need to get buy-in from the fire department on their recommendations as well, as far as pressure goes, if there's any connections. I know that was part of Hazen and Sawyer's plan, was to shore up a couple of connections that would help on the pressure for them. So I think we need to have that on that list as well, and then, you know, have something to work off of and say, okay, if we had to put a dollar value on those, each item, and, and kinda move it around in the puzzle until we kinda come up with the best package that we all agree on. Um, that, that's kinda what I would envision would be the best for all of us to work off of.
Who has that, who has that knowledge to put that list together?
Jim mentioned, what was it, three categories, recommendations by Hazen and Sawyer.
Well, um, big, uh, obviously secondary source would be one category.
Right.
Um, middle category maybe would be maintenance stuff like the agitator, the, the, the tap things he talked about. Things like that, that we could improvements. And then the third would be, be the Hazen and Sawyer recommendations. And maybe, you know, cause I, I think the fire department was kinda in on that, or they incorporated some of those things, so, um.
Yeah.
Somebody was, I wasn't.
Yeah.
So I, I think we just need to kinda, look, that's, that's kinda where we're getting our information from, and just make sure we're, we're addressing all three.
Something we gotta keep in mind, the capital improvement plan Hazen and Sawyer gave us was roughly forty-seven million dollars. So, they did include the pressure, uh, the altitude valve, uh, and the connection to the pressure, pressure reducer valve. Uh, and as far as the fire pressure, the one area that I know they were honed in on was Deer Path and, or, yeah, Deer Path Court. Uh, in South Point, and we did, we have done that, we do have the engineering plans. If we were to go down Ellisboro, I think that was eighteen thousand and another twenty-five hundred for the survey. So, uh, if we were to make that quarter of a mile, yeah, I don't know, it's probably two hundred thousand dollars or something. Uh, and of course, not only fire, uh, safety, but looping that system would be good. Uh, you know, i- i- if, if we're talking about the, the line extension, I mean, I'll keep an open mind to anything. My preference at this point would be connecting, uh, Coldwater and, and coming up sixty-five and connecting it there to Oak Level. And at the same time, as part of that project, uh, possibly connecting either up sixty-eight to sixty-five to Madison Maydan or up Southern Road to Madison Maydan.
Well, we would have to get, I mean, obviously get Madison Maydan to agree to sell us water. And I thought, I thought we had kinda been down the road with either one of them or Reedsville. I can't remember which one.
Uh, you know, one meeting, one meeting.
We can do that. I, I'll tell you one thing that I'm pretty firm on right now. As far as some of this, the money that we have to, to work with, is this agitator, uh, stirrer, or whatever you wanna call it. I mean, I think that we need to, uh, go ahead and proceed with.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that's, that's somewhere, I'm, I'm not sure what the, the range is. I don't wanna quote it, because I'm not an expert on it. But that's something I know we can afford. It's been talked about for years, and it's not. It, it's a big sum of money, but it's not a big sum, you know, considering what we're doing. It's something that needs to be done. Um, that, I, I believe we could all come to agreement and at least get one project going.
I agree.
That will help the system, and then we'll go from there. Um, I mean. I'd love for it to be a, a good five-o vote on it, that everybody agrees to, that we need to do that. Yeah, I know it's came up before, and he just sat there and said the same thing, the Rural Water Association gentleman. Um, you know, spoke with him briefly, and, uh, he, he thinks it's a real good idea. It needs to be done, so.
Well, I'm, I'm to the point where if we just identify what we need of the two different options. If somebody can identify that for us, and then, you know, get two or three bids and, and move on.
The, the full council doesn't know this, so I'm gonna be sure I mention it before we adjourn here. I had, uh, had some interface with Matt with Rural, the Rural Water Association, and had him scheduled to come speak to us this evening. And apparently something came up, but, uh, he was gonna provide an overview of our system to council. Uh, cover some of these same issues regarding the state mandated testing that Gary's gone over maybe in a little more detail. And, uh, I asked him to talk about stirs and diffusers. And whatever else he thought, uh, might, might help us. And so hopefully, our, at our next meeting, he'll be available. I'm gonna follow up with him and try to get him, and I also had been expecting Gene to be here. I must have miscommunicated with him. But I asked Gene to see if he could find an old, uh, meter yoke, a, uh, a saddle tap with a corporate stop. Uh, and, and a piece of water main to bring into the building here for show and tell for council staff and, and citizens. So that we're, you know, when, when these terms are thrown around, that everybody knows what we're talking about. Uh, our system, I think, is just really not that complicated, and I, I think most of the most of the hard work is done by Winston Salem producing that water from raw water. You know, that's where all the, the work takes place and the technology is employed and, and everything that goes into it. By the time we get it, it's, it's fairly simple. And, uh, you know, based on what Gary says, they're doing a pretty good job providing us with, uh, with a good product at the moment. And so I'm happy to hear that. I, I think we're, you know, moving along.
So can I ask, um, can I, I, I've started a list here, and I, I may put it in a little bit more formal list. So I got Jimmy says he wants an agitator for sure. I'm just trying to put some stuff on paper for those of us that don't know, you know, as much as you guys do about it.
Well.
So, go ahead, Jimmy.
I, I, I think a, a stirrer or diffuser is, should be on our list to consider strongly, as Jimmy mentioned.
Is that the same as an agitator?
Same, yes, all.
Yeah, the, the, the non-micclature that they're using in my presence is either they call it a stirrer or a diffuser. You know, Mr. Riggsby gets over my head pretty quick.
If I put agitator slash Jimmy, will I be okay with that for, for informal deception?
Well, he, he's always agitating all of us.
That's why I put it right there. So that will cover what you, what you're talking about as well.
A, a stirrer or a diffuser, and, and then the, the control, uh, the electronic controls that are recommended, have been recommended by Hazen and Sawyer, I think, are something for us to consider. That's also an expensive item. I don't have a number. The, the, the stir diffuser, I think that's somewhere in a, a two hundred thousand dollar kinda range, just all depending on the details. I'm real certain it's not twenty thousand dollars, and I'm basing this number basically off of what the folks in Madison told me some years back of what, about what they spent on their, their, uh, systems they have in their elevated tank. And so, uh.
And what was the thing that, um, Gary was talking about, that, the, what would be the, the, the twelve hundred dollar?
Sampling, so.
Sampling stations.
Back tea.
I, 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 I don't have a lot of en- me personally, I don't have a lot of enthusiasm for putting in sampling stations. So for so long as we can do without them, uh, we have all these businesses that maintain hours where we can go in. And then once we put those sampling stations in, we'll have to maintain them. I can't, it hadn't happened lately, but I, it, it, a number of times, the folks that mow the, the, the right away on the side of the road, they have, they have torn fire hydrants up with their machinery. I can't imagine what they'd do to a sampling station.
That's a good point.
So I'm just. So I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah, just make sure everybody's input's on paper, and we can, but here's my, here's my idea. And I'm just, like I said, I'm very basic here. We'll get it all on paper. And then like, we kinda get estimates for like the agitator, the electronic control, so we know kinda what a dos- a dollar we're looking at and assign to each one, and then we, we'll have something to kinda work off of as far as our budget, our importance.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree.
And then, and that where we're not just talking about it, and we can make a decision to move on, cut it off the budget and be done with it. Um, what about, uh, you, Derek? What's your, um, top priorities?
Uh, I'm, I'm kinda with Jimmy, sharing up our system with the money that we do have, and that includes a stirrer slash agitator slash diffuser. Uh, you know, as far as the, the altitude valve, I, I would rank that behind the stirrer.
Control, control valve.
Control valve. I would rank that behind the stirrer, but that seems pretty important. But, you know, if the price came back at a half million dollars, you know, is it a half million or fifty thousand? I don't know.
Yeah.
So, it, that, that I would look at. Uh. But, you know, as far as, you know, long-term benefits for this money, I think, you know, we, we do go back to a, an additional line that increases the capacity of getting water into the town of Stokesdale, should we need it one day. I mean, I think i- i- in a way, the Hazen and Sawyer study was flawed, because all it did was, and, and they only, it was data in, data out. But the data in only had residential housing growth. It had no restaurants, no, you know, say another school, another, um, manufacturer like Culp, who uses, you know, thirty thousand or so gallons a day. So, i- i- I don't know, if I would have had an opportunity to give input, I don't know necessarily what I would have said better. But that is very flawed in terms of long-term projection, capacity needs. And I say that because i- you know, th- that line coming up fifty-eight, one fifty-eight. You know, I, I don't, I don't know how much, uh, truly is, is left for the town of Stokesdale after you account for what's used in Forsyth County, that, you know, they've got twelve inches, we've only got eight inches.
Right.
Uh, so.
But if we, um, so based on that same theory, and you're talking about coming, so, obviously Madison Maydan and Reedsville would be a different issue. But there was a talk at one time about coming up the, through Walkertown with a second line out of Walkertown up Blues Creek Road.
Uh, w- well, there was talk of the four miles down one fifty-eight, running a parallel line to the lake. But, you know, once you get in Forsyth County, there's still that same twelve-inch line that that would feed into that. And, and I guess that is an option. I've listed four options down here as far as secondary line. And I put option five, a parallel line down one fifty-eight. And, uh, I'll make a personal note that I don't like it.
Mr. Foy, I, I, I just state the obvious, or maybe it's not so obvious. Uh, the, the teeing into our line at our metering station and going up Coldwater Road to NC sixty-five and then into town is appealing to me. It would serve the same purpose as the parallel line.
Yes.
But it would also offer additional, uh, an additional service area to our citizens and, and certainly more fire hydrants for the, for the fire department. The, the parallel line, I, I don't see the, that being particularly economical compared to, uh, Coldwater sixty-five. But just, just from a layman's perspective, I don't see how, uh, those two eight-inch lines wouldn't, wouldn't more than adequately carry the same amount of water as a, as if the twelve-inch line came directly into the center of town. Just, I don't, I don't have any engineering backup on that. But, but I think, uh, that's the pro- the issue is Hazen and Sawyer didn't study that. There's no, we don't have any engineering data on it, uh, other than our best guess.
So is the line that comes up one fifty-eight to our, our station, is, is twelve inch coming into our station?
It's twelve inch ductile iron.
So, is, just going back on what you just said a minute ago, so I'm not confused. Um, so we don't have any issue with that, the, the capacity coming up that twelve-inch line? You don't think?
Not, we, we don't have a problem that we're aware of. I think what Mr. Foy is saying, we, we don't know if it one day in the future that we'll be able to enjoy the full capacity of the line that the town of Stokesdale paid for. Because Forsyth County is also utilizing that line and branching off of that line. So, you know, uh, Stokesdale paid for it, but we didn't make any arrangement to, to preserve a hundred percent of the capacity.
Got you.
So we don't know where we fall on the demand scale there. We don't have that in our contract, I don't think.
Well, we know we can get three hundred thousand gallons of that.
Yeah, going back to my, my question a couple minutes ago, I, I guess I was more confused or trying to find that. So there's not another line coming out of the, the center of Walkertown, coming up like, uh, Blues Creek Road or sixty-five or anything like that?
I don't know.
That would, would go around. So, so we're saying at this point, the only line crossing the lake, totally crossing all, end up in our area is that one line.
Correct.
So we would have to.
Yes, and, but, but I wanna build on that. I, I don't know what kinda lines come out of Walkertown, and, uh, I, I wonder how way sixty, I put it as option three, if we went down highway sixty-five or Blues Creek Road to the power plant where there is an additional water line. And that's for four and a half miles, and it's, it's pretty hilly terrain, somewhat.
It ends at the post office.
Uh, tha- that is not as appealing as Coldwater sixty-five to Oak Level, uh, to me. But if there was another trunk line that fed that, as opposed to the trunk line that's going through Water Town, that, Walkertown, that feeds us, then it does become appealing, almost like it would be tied for, for, for what I personally prefer. I, I like Coldwater sixty-five Oak Level with, i- if we're, especially if we're able to tie in to Madison right north of here, a, a, a mile, you know, call it a mile of line, uh, maybe even less than that. Uh, because that's, that one shores up our second source. And two, gives us two and a half to three linear miles of footage for our town, the town of Stokesdale. Ha- Hall River's, you know, certainly a, a, a good option, a viable option. Uh, in, in terms of length, I think we're looking at, you know, five and a half miles, so it might be a little longer. Uh. It's only a quarter of a mile of Stokesdale, covering Stokesdale, the town of Stokesdale. And, y- you know, I have a hard time going down Hall River Road and us absorbing all the cost in, in, in putting two and a half miles into Oak Ridge.
A- as, as it currently stands, again, to state the obvious, because I'd be surprised if, if there's anything I don't know here about this. But the town of Oak Ridge, Forsyth County, uh, the Oak Ridge Fire Department, the Stokesdale Fire Department, there, there's nobody out there offering to help pay for this. This is gonna be all on the town of Stokesdale if we do this thing currently. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, and that's what makes it not very, very appealing to me.
I just wanna make sure that.
At this point in time, so.
Just wanna make sure a council member here hadn't been approached and, and has had, you know, even a, a conversation about somebody else helping pay for it.
Uh, uh, about a year and a half ago, a conversation with a council member in Oak Ridge, where after five minutes of conversation, we realized, we cordially realized we were at an impasse with some of the terms and conditions.
I don't want us to have to service, uh, customers up Hall River Road. I just kinda feel like that's getting outside of what we do outside of our territory.
We're already doing it.
Well, I understand that, and I understand how that happened, but, um, I, I don't, that don't mean I have to like it. So, uh, in the absence of somebody else saying, oh, yeah, we're in there with you, we'll pay our full share. Uh, you know, that, 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 running a quarter mile and then the other five miles to, to get there, that did, just doesn't, doesn't appeal to me. I, I like the, the hall, the Coldwater NC sixty-five connection, because all of it is inside of Stokesdale, every inch, if I'm not mistaken and correct. Every inch of it.
Every inch.
And so that in essence would give us a twelve-inch line that would come to Stokesdale and then branch into two eight-inch lines coming into the center of town from two different directions. Uh, you know, once we get some engineering evaluation, hopefully we'll find that that would be, uh, a big boost to our capacity.
I- i- and there, there's downsides, so I've got five options, and there are, there are pretty hefty downsides. And there, there's downsides, so I've got five options. And there are, there are pretty hefty downsides to all of them. I mean, just Coldwater sixty-five oak level, the downside there is the source is one twelve-inch trunk line out of Forsyth County. I put highway sixty-five to the power plant. Well, i- i- if it, the, the source there is indeed that same trunk line, that's a downside. Another downside is the, is the mileage and potentially the terrain.
You've got a little bit, if you go, if you go the, the other route going on up sixty-five, you've got a range of so many miles there that you've got a little insurance on. But I mean, is it worth that? You know, you come up and you do, do a line coming out to where it could be cut off, where let's say the line broke going in Stokesdale on one side, and you'd have the other line, if you, if it's set up properly. And we just, you know, he said once the sale is twenty-four seven, if they have a line break, they're gonna be on.
And that's, that's a good point. Part of the secondary line to us is because we're not twenty-four seven and we with our emergency response plan, I think we can do the best we can do, which I think is pretty good.
Well, if, if, if it breaks right now, we, we have a, a check valve system in place that will hold all our water on our side in the elevated tank, et cetera. And, and we would have whatever waters in the elevated tank until there was a repair, repair done. But this is information, this is the best information I have, and it's the only information I have. You know, several years ago, in that room, I had a, an interview with Green Engineering. And I asked an engineer and a manager of what the capacity of that twelve-inch line was that we had installed. And I was told after a little bit of ciphering that it was one point one million gallons a day. The Hazen and Sawyer study that we have projects water usage in the town of Stokesdale out to like point four million gallons a day to two thousand forty. Does that sound right?
But Tim, I, I think it's flawed.
And, and I don't disagree with you, but my point is that, that we, our line in theory has the capacity to, to, to supply twice our projected capacity out to two thousand thirty or forty, so there's no reason for us to do anything rash here. We're, we're, you know, we're, we're, we're in a good spot.
I, I agree that we're in a good spot. I think we could do nothing, and in ten, fifteen years, I think we'd be in a good spot.
Yeah, but then we'd have to give that money, we'd have to give this money back that we can use right now to shore this up for deer's down the road. I mean, that's the reason we're sitting here. We wouldn't, if we hadn't had the this money coming in that we
The blessing and a curse. We got more work to do.
You know, if we hadn't had this come in, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it. We wouldn't be pulling money out of the bank to do it.
Well, unlike some of the other government units in this state, we're gonna figure out a way to make the best use of it and get the most mileage out of it for our citizens.
Robbie, if you could Google gallons per hour and diameters. I think diameter and pipe. Diameter and pipe. And, and this is gonna
How you factor in pressure?
Yeah, so, so I'm not. Assume average pressure twenty to one hundred PSI. Hell, that's a
It's a good joke.
Yeah, exactly. I wish I had that kinda
We, we get watered a hundred and sixty-five PSI, but best, based on my memory.
Down there at the lake.
That's what, 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 what we, what our input pressure is. I, I feel like I'm pretty close here.
So, if you click on one of these, it's gonna give you the option, it, it'll show you. Pipe volume calculator. Hit that. Alright, pipe diameter eight inches. Hell, I don't even know length. I mean, they're, they're four miles. Twenty yards. This may not be the, so an eight-inch line. What does this mean?
Twenty yards is only sixty feet.
Is, is it a hundred and
You're talking about a mile, it's a thousand?
Yeah, this isn't the calculator I Can we go back?
Yeah, it's like fifty-four eighty.
That's feet.
Yards, it's thirteen fifty-seven.
It's thirteen twenty in a quarter mile.
That's feet. Put, put, put a hundred.
I think, I think there's plenty of water.
Water, you wanna do the velocity?
I don't know, we'll, we'll save it for the engineers.
Yeah, I think we're over our head here.
The, there's plenty, that eight-inch pipe, I, I'm pretty sure it can do, you know, over a million gallons a day. I've heard the term head loss. Wh- what does that mean?
Friction.
So, do you know what impact friction would have on the theoretical capacity of a pipe? Of anybody up here, you would know, but.
I do when it comes to farm irrigation systems, but not municipal systems. But, but I can speak to that, but we don't have any crops to water. It's five thousand two hundred and eighty feet in a mile. I, I would answer that this way. We get water at one sixty-five, comes out of our station at about one forty-five, give or take. By the time we get it into the middle of town, we're currently down probably to sixty-five in the middle of town. Just, it really depends on where you're at, you know, out on the extremities and that sort of thing, but I'm just shooting from the hip here. Yeah, we always have an option of putting in a boost station. We just, we don't wanna have to pay for the pump. We don't have to pay for the power to run it, the maintenance and all those sorts of things. But, but that is something that, that would be an option to, to boost our pressure if, if we needed it. You know, tho- those are all engineering questions. But our system, in, in my opinion, it, you know, given how old it is, you know, given how the area we keep taking in, I, I think it does real well. But I, I think one of the things I would keep reminding council is it wasn't designed for fire flows. It, it is never gonna have the fire flows that you have in the middle of High Point, the middle of Winston-Salem, the middle of Greensboro, where you have a grid of water mains running in every direction. We're, we're never gonna get there. Our system's designed for potable water, and we provide supplemental firefighting water to the fire department. So if you ask a fireman how much flow you need out of a hydrant, I finally got this out of the chief not too long ago, said he liked to see seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute. I, I don't, we, we would probably just have to apply that four, forty-five million dollars to get that kind of flow. I don't know, but we're certainly, we're a long ways away from it with, with our average fire hydrants. Once you get off of one fifty-eight, I think. Yeah, we're just that's not a reasonable goal that we can reach easily.
I don't know. What number flagged Hazen and Sawyer on their report, if they're talking? Because it seemed like it was the ones under six hundred gallons a minute.
Yeah, if you, if you look under the National Fire Protection Association color coding for hydrants, the, the, the red is, falls under about five hundred gallons a minute. We have some that are on the low side at five thirty, five forty, somewhere along in there. But, but still, that's five thirty, five forty. I mean, the fire department used to have to go pump the water out of a pond around here to put it on a fire. So, I mean, I feel like we're, e- e- even if the fire department has to go to two ends of town to, to haul water. I, I mean, I feel like we're, you know, we're providing a, a reasonable amount of firefighting water. But I just don't, to, to, it would take, we'd have to completely reorientate our system and, and our thinking and our engineering to, to get to where the fire department would like to have us. And, and I, I don't, I don't know how to do that with the money we have available.
I hear you, and I guess I'm saying, I need to look at the study again, but to, to my recollection, we'll leave it that way. The majority of the hydrants were seven fifty-ish, some more. And that the anomalies were were under six hundred, and there was only just a couple of those. To, to the best of my recollection.
The, the lowest hydrant we have is probably five twenty, five thirty, five forty, somewhere in that range. And, and they vary a little bit, being on the peak water usage and various things. So, and, and if the council was gonna make a decision, I, I think it might be prudent to get an engineering firm to send a technician out to, to do some checks over a period of time, instead of relying on the fire department data alone. Because we don't have any other measurements here, really. You know, Hazen and Sawyer, I'm not sure in part that they didn't rely on that, that those fire department tests that are done over time. The fire department has done a lot of testing over a period of time, and, and those that data is, is back in the file cabinet, back in the back. And I'd, I'd like to see it put in some kind of chronological order, but, but we have it in the building. And I think we've also turned up the pressure at our PRV valve a little bit. So I think that can't do anything but help our, our fire flows. You know, when I say help, I, I, I look for increase of two PSI or three PSI, something like that, not twenty or thirty. And I'm, I'm just, you know, speaking as a layman. But I, I think the, the, you know, the town's goals, or, or, no, town's goal is to provide potable water to our, to our citizens and our businesses, the fire department. They want all the water they can get when they have a fire, which is understandable. But I don't know how to get them there in the next twenty or thirty years. With the budget money we have.
I'm, I'm looking at the fire flows now. And they, they look pretty good.
And when I have conversations with rural water and, and operators and engineers and what have you, it, DEQ does not really prioritize fire flows. They, they focus on the other aspects of a municipal system, water quality and, and sufficient pressure. They really don't get into, into the fire flow issue. So there, there's not a lot of backup available from higher government with opinions here regarding our fire hydrants. That I can find.
Alright. Are there any other thoughts and comments about?
Well, I, I had also suggested to council that we needed to continue to monitor and ask ourselves if there's anything we need to do about the areas of underground contamination in town. Will we task Mr. Wagner with seeing what he could find out about that? I spoke to him before this meeting, but I'd like for him to take two or three minutes to give council the update on that. But that's a project that, you know, may or may not require some of this money. I just don't know. About Mr. Wagner?
Yes, absolutely. So I, I started off by looking at what we had already in town hall. And did find two files talking about the contamination from oh seven and oh nine. And not saying that's when it started, just that's whenever it was listed. One of them being on US Highway one fifty-eight. And another one being on, in the Southern Meadows, that's a, is that a subdivision, Southern Meadows? Or in that area. And both of these talk about the soil being more contaminated than what the state allows. And so found that, kinda started there, and then reached out to someone from DEQ, got bounced around a little bit till I spoke with Ms. Karen Krom. And she provided me the, the information for their database. They use Laserfish, which is this just large storage website place where you can go and search using keywords. Dug around there a little bit, and they've got records from all over.
Would you spell her last name?
Absolutely. Her name, her first name is spelt odd as well. Karen, C-A-R-I-N. And her last name is Krom, K-R-O-M-M. And she is with DEQ and Division of Waste Management.
How do you spell her last name?
K-R-O-M-M.
I, I would have never got that one.
Not me either. But after speaking with her, you know, she kinda gave me, basically said, here, go look at this, go look at our, our our massive file system here and see, you know, what you can find. And, and if you've got questions about it, then by all means ask. First thing she wanted was addresses. And I told her, well, we've got four zones, not necessarily physical addresses. There's addresses within those zones, but hundreds of them. And so, you know, just kinda peeking over these files, you know, I've seen stuff here from the, the largest one that I found was from nineteen ninety-six. The Culp ticking discovered a earthen, earthen waste diapid that was constructed by the previous owner of the site, which was Fieldcrest Cannon. And it just talks about, it's got images, talks about them pulling the samples and whatnot. And, you know, you dig through the files a little bit more, two of the most recent ones that I've found are from this year and last year. One of which is in Stokesdale, but it's in Rockingham County. And let's see, it was on highway sixty-eight. And basically what I'm seeing is it's where people are sending in a notice or a request for their soil to be checked. And the two that I've found are, they'll check them, and from the one on sixty-eight and twenty-one, and the one on Ellisboro Road from twenty-two, have both said that the detected contaminant did not exceed the water standard. Therefore, no restrictions of use of this water are recommended at this time. And so, you know, that could be that it's just those areas weren't affected, or it could be something, I don't, I don't know. Let's see, this contamination's pretty old. I don't think it's something that just goes away. But I would say that, you know, I'm not seeing where they're doing frequent tests of all the areas. It seems more of a as requested basis. And so as people send in, they, they do it, and then they let them know whether or not it's good or not.
Do you have an address on sixty-eight and an address on Ellisboro Road?
It's in Rockingham County, both of them?
Well, the one on Ellisboro is in Guilford County. And so the, this is eight nine zero five Ellisboro Road, Guilford County. And this was
And it's, it's by, by state standards, it's, it's acceptable.
That's correct, that's correct. It does have some contaminant, but it says that it's low enough that it's, it's fine for household use, showering, bathing, dishes, flushing toilets. They have a whole list of everything it's fine with. And then the one that was in Stokesdale, but it was for Rockingham County, is on sixty-eight. This was three six seven North Carolina Highway sixty-eight, and it was classified as low risk, and it's got an incident number. But all of them seem to be checking for petroleum underground storage tanks. Well, that one did. This was actually at the WJMH radio station. Is that a
There's a tower out there, that could be it.
Okay, alright, well they checked there for any petroleum underground storage tanks. And so I'm assuming at one point someone thought there was gas tanks there, and so they've checked that.
I guess I've just got a general comment.
Yeah, what's that?
Back in the early two thousands, the town of Stokesdale, and help me out with this, guys, the town of Stokesdale when, in certain spots, had contaminated soil. That was contaminating the water table. The corrective action is that we got a water system. And to the best of my knowledge, our water lines service those areas. So I, I think we have a problem and we have a corrective action. The DEQ has, you know, a trust fund set up for water contamination. There has been, there have been, that I know, businesses in this town that were on well water in those contaminated areas that went to the DEQ. And they paid for the tap
Cause they tried to get us to pay for it.
And, and that was not gonna happen. So, problem, corrective action. I, I, I don't know, I mean, I keep an open mind, but I'm, I'm not sure what we can do to further pursue the issue. The issue, I mean.
I understand.
I don't, I don't think that was really the question, at least it wasn't in my mind, my concern was, is it spreading, and I think you have discovered, it's not spreading.
To the best of my knowledge, I can't see where they've sent out any notices of it spreading or anything like that, now.
It's not spreading, I think, yeah, as, as Derek said, I think, I think the town, the council's done everything they can. I do have a question, what happened to our map, where did it go?
It's, for the time being, we put it in right outside of, in between Dale and I's office, so we were looking at it, whenever we were discussing. Stuff amongst ourselves to figure out where these areas were, and especially whenever she was asking for addresses, we brought it back there just to brainstorm.
Did you bother to a- did you bother to ask to see if there is a, a newer version of that?
I did, I reached out to uh, let's see, that was one of my first emails, I believe it was. Two thousand and three is what's on that map, and it was done by a fellow with the last name Charts. And I reached out to Guilford County to see if there was an updated version of the map, and I also asked um. Mr. Whitman from the DEQ, and he is the one that, you know, basically introduced me to Ms. Crom. Uh, but I never did get a response on the, on the map.
So nothing just fell at you?
No.
Nothing jumped out at you where we got some big major problem going on or?
Not from what I can see.
Well, not that I. Excuse me, Jim, are you done? I'm, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, and not, not that I don't care what you four think, but uh. What I wanna see here is uh. Something in writing from Guilford County and DEQ, s- uh, recognizing that Stokesdale's made this inquiry. About those three area, those three plumes of underground contamination. And them answer us and tell us, yeah, they exist, but that's all we know, we don't have any updated information to give you. That, that's when I'll be satisfied, I, I'm, you know, i- if, if a citizen or group of citizens come in here and say, oh my gosh. You know, on our street, we found out we've been drinking uh, subpar water out of our well, why didn't you tell us, then I, then I, that. I will at least be able to hand them.
Yeah.
That, those communications, and, and that is where I'm coming from, I doggone it. I just think we have a, a duty to, to monitor that, that situation and provide any updated information that's available from higher government. Or have it on file here in this building, that's, that's just what I believe.
And so how are we gonna do it? I mean, what just, what's his instructions, or are you gonna instruct somebody to do something?
We, we already, we already did, Mr. Mr. Wagner is working on this and following up with it, now the question is, is council asking him to stop? I hear a couple of council members saying, well, you know, we've done all we can do, and I'm ju- I'm, I'm, I'm.
Who has said that?
I'm just one.
Who, who has said that?
That's what I heard, that, that, you know, we've gone about as far as we can go. Well, forgive me, but that's what I understood, and so um. I, I am uh. At a loss what the next step might be, since I don't know which department, which, which person, which uh, agency. In, in higher government may have the information we're looking for, or may be able to provide us the reassurance that we'd like to have.
Robbie could go back to this Karen, and just simply request what uh, Mr. Jones has asked for. Is some documentation that we have inquired, and, and so far, this is what we have gotten back. I think that's what Mr. Jones is asking for.
And then get it from the health department too.
Yeah, and I'll reach out again to Guilford County Health Department and see.
So that we do have the, the backup for what we're inquiring, cause I agree with Tim, this is, this is very important for us to uh, to su- to oversee.
Yep.
It, it, one of our jobs is to be the, the watchdog or the sheepdog for our citizens, and, and this is, you know. Uh, a potential problem we have in our territory.
Well.
Agreed.
We gotta have a, we gotta have a plan of being a watchdog, you don't just let the dog out and roam the neighborhood.
Well, well, you know, the way, the way I see it, we have our bloodhound here on the job, and, and he's following up with every lead that he can find, and. And I don't li- I wouldn't know where to point him at any other leads, other than Guilford County, Guilford County Health Department and DEQ. Uh, I don't, I don't think it's something that he needs to contact the federal government for, God, I hope not, but.
So, a- a- and I'm fine with Robbie chasing this down, but I'm trying to look at it from a practical standpoint. He, he's gonna say, we had this issue back in twenty oh five, can you say that the issue is fully contained and? Is that kinda what we're looking for?
That'd be great, but I don't think you're gonna get that.
Well, well, at one time, the, the state was in the area, or the county one, and they were going to people knocking on doors and saying, hey, can we test your well water? I, I, I can think of at least one individual that that was reported to me, I, I, I don't know where this list is at, I, I don't know, maybe it's. The data is so old, it's been thrown out, you know, it's been purged from their, their system, I, I don't know. But we had a serious enough problem that we, uh, we got a grant and we put in a municipal water system to solve it. You know, that's great, and I hear what you're saying, but we still have people drinking the well water in the same neighborhood where the contamination was at. So that don't make damn sense, Mr. Foley.
It, it doesn't make sense to me either.
And so I.
We go knock on their door?
Well, what, well, I, I would suggest to you that, you know, these houses turn over, people come and go, they move here from other areas. And uh, we at least need to have uh, the most updated information available if anybody inquires. I, I don't know how to let every citizen inside of those plumes know what we know, which is not very much. Uh, you know, they, they, they have a duty to kinda look after themselves too. But it, it's a little nutty that the town put in a water system and then, but, you know, got the money from the state, but the. The citizens in the area where the contamination was at, they all didn't hook up, or I don't know if they should have been required to be hooked up. I think they should at least have been required to be notified without a shadow, you know, certified letter or something, said, hey, you know. You, you, you may have contaminated well water, and you have an option to hook up to the town of Stokesdale water, you might wanna consider this, I don't know if this town even did that. So, I can't reconcile, we got underground contamination, we had to put in a water system for, and then once we get the water system in, it, it went away.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing that it's not a important issue, we're just. Instead of just talking about it, we're just trying to figure out exactly what the steps are to actually do something about it, instead of. Coming up every meeting and us not, you know, just, hey, we're up.
Well.
Possibly got a contaminated well out here somewhere, and we need to send our bird dogs out.
Well, forgive me, but I mentioned it, since Mr. Rigsby was working on this list that might use up our capital as this, this. Contamination issue being one of those. If in fact a problem was discovered, then we, we mu- might sp- spend money solving it, that's, that's my point.
The DEQ. We direct them to that trust fund.
I, I know in one particular case, there was a citizen that was aware of the contamination, the st- the state. I think paid for part of it, or all of it, put in a filtration system, and at one time was buying the filters, giving them to this citizen to use in their. Their house, I don't wanna mention his name or address here, don't wanna put him on the spot. Uh, but he didn't wanna hook up to the town's system because of the cost of having to pay for the tap, and he was already up. I think getting the filters for free, and that's just as far as he went, and so uh. That's a little, little nutty to my way of looking at it, far as spending state money, because the state should have. You know, if the state was gonna do that to you, we just bought filtration systems for everybody in the area and called it a day.
So what would you propose, by uh, hooking them up to the water system for free?
If I thought that was a risk to them, I think that's something council should, could discuss, or, or discuss financing a tap for them, or giving them a discount for their taps. I don't have the solution for that, I, I'm just saying it's our job to, to monitor that situation once we know it exists.
I don't know, that might be over in my head, if, if the problem exists, isn't that what the DEQ is there for, I mean, it's.
It, tha- that's what I wanna hear from them, that we, we know about this and we got this.
Okay, cool, because I don't know how we have the ability to, to, to monitor.
Well, that, that's what, that's what I'd love to hear from them, to send us, you know, a communication, say, hey. Just to alleviate any fears in the town of Stokesdale, we, we know about this contamination, we're monitoring it, we'll let you know if anything changes. I'd love to get that.
I mean, I, I've got s- some experience in an, an, another aspect of my life where there. The DEQ is all over it, if they feel like there's a problem, to the point of uh. They're all over it.
So, so what we're gonna do is Robbie's. Wanna check into it?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Try to get certifications or letters, or, or some assurances from DEQ and the Guilford County Health Department, is anything else, Tim, that?
And I can.
We all agree that if there's an issue, we wanna do something about it, I think we might be a little bit on who. Would take care of it, like DEQ or us or whatever, but. I mean, that's pretty much where we can go, is anywhere else we can go, Tim?
I don't think so, Mr. Landriff.
Whitney, the health department, point us to the DEQ. We'll find out, we'll find out.
Robbie, pursue it however you can.
Absolutely.
If you need something from us, don't, don't hesitate, if you need something from me.
Yeah.
Call me, I'll be glad to make phone calls, whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
I, I'm willing to leave it up to Mr. Wagner's judgment as to how much time he devotes to this and, and follows it to a reasonable conclusion, you know, he's uh. Done okay so far, I don't, I don't know what else to do.
That's what we wanna figure out, but we gotta do something about it, because we, we, we can't go on and on and on, I mean.
That's agreed.
Put a project list together, and um, I mean, this would be important if it, if it, if it came, you know, something did come up, so we gotta. In order to proceed, we, we've got to um. Get the information as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I would be interested to understand the, the liability the town would have or should have. Versus, is it a want or a need, or we wanna do it, or we need to do it, and um. I, I just, I just, I have a hard time, somebody's been living there for ten or fifteen years and has failed to take action to join the, the water system and. And we would basically bail them out for their lack of initiative, um, you know, uh, that, that would be a hard. And I can't imagine that from a town libel standpoint, that we would be in that position because it's private property and we. We weren't responsible for the spill or responsible for the, any of that, um. Just my, my thoughts on that, um, and I also, um, would, would, well, I, I would be assured that. Anybody that bought or sold real estate in those areas would have had to probably been notified, I would, I would hope they would have been notified through the disclosure process. Um, hopefully, and I get.
The disclosure process is a, a load of.
Yeah, but hopefully they're, they're doing their due diligence, somebody is.
But it's. I've never known it to come up in a disclosure, I, I have been involved in numerous real estate transactions in the areas. Some of them in the area that you're speaking about, and it has never come up, been discussed. Uh, a, a real estate agent in their defense, what would they be disclosing other, disclosing other than there was a. An old map down on the wall in town hall, uh, and so, uh, from their perspective, I can see the problem they got. And so I'm just, I just wanna be sure council and the town's doing the right thing, that, that's all I'm saying.
This is a material fact, and a Realtor, a Realtor by their license is required to inform any buyer. Of any material fact, now, the onus is on. The onus is initially on the seller, but it is also incumbent on the Realtor to do their due diligence, to make sure it's not in a floodplain. Uh, this contamination has been contained, uh, all of that kinda thing, so, that's not to relieve us. Of our responsibility, but as far as the property's changing hands, the first recourse would be to go back to the Realtor.
Well, if the information was, it, it's apparently pretty difficult to find out there on the web.
That I don't know.
Well, we've got a water system, if we got contamination somewhere, we've got a water system. And, and if there's lines running by, they hook up, just like my well runs dry, um, I'm gonna have to hook up to the water system. And it'd be the same case, I mean, what would be the difference if my well went dry and I didn't have any water?
The, the good news is that we do have uh, water mains in close proximity to these areas, well, may- maybe. One fifty-eight needs to be extended a few more feet down uh, towards two twenty to, to kinda circle around that one and. At, at Culp Ticken and, and the old Frittle Farm, uh, which is.
Southern Meadows.
I swear, I, I, I forget, I fi- I forget the subdivision names.
We both know where we're talking about.
Well, basically, we.
We do.
They have a, a line down Southern Road coming from Rockingham County and all the way through there.
Yeah, yeah.
And encompass all that, and that's one of the things we're doing, is trying to, uh, these extra lines we put in.
Well, okay, ju- just speaking hypothetically, let's just say, uh, but Mr. Wagner uncovered some. Data, hard data from DEQ or the county that it uh. Plume at, centered on Culp Ticken and the old Frittle Farm, uh, which I think is Southern Meadows, was moving to the east. That might, uh, we, the council might consider extending the water main further down one fifty-eight, towards two twenty, towards Parkers. To, to service that area, and so tha- that's why this is. I, I think a conversation that's germane to what we're trying to do with, with prioritizing uh. Capital water projects here, that, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I think we got a, a plan, don't we?
Yeah, I think so, if Robbie can pursue this, the other thing is, Mr. Rigsby had a list of things to do, one of those things was. The agitator or the uh, infusion system, I think what we should do there is, uh, we ought to pursue who can do this. And let's get some bids on it.
Yep, that's a, I, I, I mean, we can't vote on it here.
No.
But.
Well, we can, we can vote to have the, we can vote to, to have the, the bids put in, we can.